Committee, special meeting.
I got one.
There's one up there.
Got one? I'll get one.
Not a big deal.
Something definitely changed somewhere.
Let me put this on.
Ryan?
Remember to set that email on my desk.
I want to set her off. Thank you. Okay, it's the official, one minute after.
I think all our microphones are off.
I just turned mine on.
In your leg. Okay, guys. There you go. It's official. Meeting, whoop. Now it's official. Okay. Can you guys hear me? Okay. All right. Going to call it to order at 5:01. Well, yeah, 5:02, 5:01, whatever works. We'll have civil reflection at this point. We'll start with the pledge of, oh, little do we call them.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Chandler here, Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Now that that's taken care of, we'll have civil reflection. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I know Joe is watching, so... He's there with us. All right. We have approval of the agenda.
I approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we just have a second?
Second.
Yep.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item four, for those that are following. It's a disclosure of conflict of interest. Is there any? Doesn't appear to be. Public statements. Are there any? Doesn't seem to be. All right. Item six, we're under introduction and discussion for the fiscal year 2024 budget recommendations. And just so people know, I know it says a copy of the 24 budget recommendations under your documents, but if that's too small, then we can come to the township?
Oh, yeah. Yes, we have copies at the front counter for anyone that would like one.
Okay, sounds good. So, just so you know. All right.
Okay. My plan is to go page by page unless there's some other preferred method for this process. Not seeing any disagreement, so I'm going to go ahead and start with page one of the budget. I had indicated in the memo I had dispersed with my recommendation that property taxes are scheduled to increase over $109,000. General fund revenues are expected to increase over $246,000, and that's over 2023. Some of those areas include property tax collection fees, sales tax statutory, and then constitutional, which is also known as revenue sharing, are slated to go up. And the other revenue item on the second page of the budget that is expected to see an increase is other revenue because we are receiving opioid settlement funds. Those are scheduled to increase as well. Any specific questions about line items or what might be contained in each of them? Please.
Obviously.
It's okay. Please go ahead.
No, when you're talking about your current property tax, that, and the increase that we have, which apparently seems to be quite a bit, actually.
Hundred and nine. Hundred and nine. Other users spend 40 or 50,000, so you're correct.
Okay. And you're not including the police and fire because we're now looking at that as a public safety?
Correct.
So if I'm under, you want to wait until we reach that point? Because that's like $105,000 added to...
That, that millage as well. Yes.
Okay, so what is that total?
Along with the police, the public safety?
Yeah.
That is a separate millage?
Yes, I under, that's what I asked. So as a separate millage, we don't include that in our property tax?
No, because it's part, it's not part of the general fund any longer.
Oh, so, okay.
They're their own fund.
Yep. And they have a fund balance also, don't...
That's correct, they do.
No. I think that was, other than your franchise fees, what is that? What's a franchise fee?
So franchise fees, if I included any notes on 477, they're payments made from Wow, Comcast, DirecTV, and AT&amp;T to provide service in our community.
Oh, so they pay us?
They pay us.
In addition to being paid by somebody else?
Yes, for the use of the right of way, I will phrase it that way. They're usually in the right of way, and so we receive a portion of that each year from the state.
Okay. I think... Well, we have a liquor fee, and that's about 5,000.
Correct. So those payments come in at the end of each year, but we no longer have control over issuance of those.
Okay.
So that one's a little hard to estimate, but I try to go off what we've received in the past.
But we don't receive any?
We do, but I'm just saying, I never know if there's going to be new ones or less or...
Yep, okay.
So it's one of those difficult numbers to estimate.
Nope, that's, I see that you did the same, you know, across the board. Okay, I think... Well, our sex offender thing, that's gone down by $100. Our fingerprints. Is that? Yep, okay. Oh, when you have your fire report?
We generally don't charge for fire reports.
Okay, but we did it in '23.
They have a couple they asked for. I believe if it's an, if it's an arson, the insurance company may request.
Those are where that funds come from.
Okay. And the library, we know that's obviously a pass through, but we still have a recommended balance?
So the $3,628 that you see there estimated is what we receive for collecting taxes for them.
Oh, I got, they pay us.
It's an administrative fee.
Gotcha.
Correct.
Oh, they agreed to that?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. And then we have the administrative fee for other fees. So what's the administrative fee? It says water.
So sewer and water, those funds are transferred for the collection of those charges.
Okay.
And they feed the general fund to offset the work that front office staff does to collect those fees.
All right, so that's like the administration fee?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's $1,000?
The one I'm looking at is the other fees, is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, that's...
Yeah, it says administrative charges, that's 6,000. Then it says other fees, 1,000.
Okay, so 618. That's for FOIA's peddler permits, copies, return check fees. That's what goes there.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's another...
There's a, there's a note on page three for that.
Okay. Nope, I just wanted to hear it. We have park and recreation charges. $4,500. Civil infraction penalties. Do we still have a park and recreation?
Mm-hmm. Anytime she puts on a program, that's where the fees are collected into.
But we don't have a park and recreation committee. We have a recreational committee, but not a parks, because you split them up.
I understand that.
No, I understand.
But there's any time there's, there's fees for, to play in a program, which could be flag football or soccer or any of those things. Those fees come into that line item.
So it is recreation, not parks?
Correct.
Okay.
It's just listed that way in our accounts.
Yeah.
Through BSNA, so...
But I, oh, BSNA does that. So it's not mandatory through law that we have a park and recreation?
It's just what it's called.
Okay, BSNA.
By the state chart of accounts.
Okay. Well, okay. The interest for the senior meals. You've got senior meals 000 all the way across. Then your interest is 58,000.
There's no interest for senior meals. It's a separate line item. It's interest on investments that we have.
On investments.
The colored bars don't go together. I think that's what's confusing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is a little confusing.
They're just design, not content.
Just to help you read it better.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, you have parks and recs donations, zero, but other revenue.
So there are throughout the year times when people will overpay their registration so that it goes into that fund, which helps to allow young people with a lower income to participate in programs. And then they're sponsored by the Parks and Rec program.
So they overpay by 50,000?
Marie, it's two separate lines. The bars don't go together.
No, I, I, so it's, so it's zero.
What's other revenue then?
That's the question that you should answer.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
It's got nothing to do with Parks and Rec.
Okay, so, so the other fees, that's where I indicated, excuse me, is the opioid settlement money.
You might have forgot to put that in, I know.
Will you say that again, Karen?
Yeah, please do.
It's revenue resulting from handicap parking tickets, steel salvage, and opioid settlement money.
All put into other revenue.
There are several things that go into that line item, but those are just a few that...
Yeah, because when I looked at that, it saw 50,000, I thought, whoa.
So it's mostly opioid, right?
It's mostly opioid money.
Okay. Why is it in, under...
Are we going to get marijuana funds this next year, too?
Yes, I think we're playing, we're scheduled...
I'm sorry, what?
Do we know where that's going to go? The marijuana funds?
That, that may go into there as well.
For 2024 that we'll collect? That would probably go in there, too.
That would probably go in there, too.
So it's this line item of 66, 675.000?
Yep.
Other revenue.
Oh, that's a funny place to put that. Okay, got it. Okay. When you say reimbursement for other, and you have zero...
Funds received as a result of insurance claims. Since I can't predict insurance claims, I can't predict revenue into that line item.
Oh. Hmm, okay. And then your reimbursement for the housing commission?
Yes.
That would be the same...
We, so we provide, we have in the past provided benefits for the housing commission director, such as, I believe it's long-term disability, short-term disability, accidental death and dismemberment. And then we pay the, we pay the insurance premium, and then that's reimbursed by the housing commission.
So we aren't going to do that?
She doesn't know the dollar amount.
That's what I'm saying. Because we don't know the dollar amount of that amount right now?
Yes. That's correct.
Hmm, okay. So there's a number of...
So that could be an amendment later on?
Questions? Why wouldn't we know that? Wouldn't we go on?
Because we had a previous director...
No, I understand that, but wouldn't you plug in?
I don't have rates yet for 2024, so no.
For anybody?
No.
So...
I could have just put an arbitrary number there, but I decided not to.
But when the treasurer says later on we'll have an amendment, later on we'll know that number?
Correct.
And that associates to this budget?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, the amendment will be to the '23 budget. Because we still have a zero in the '23 budget.
No, we do. That's what I didn't understand, because in 2022, we have a figure, but we didn't have for the amended budget in '23 nor the activity budget.
So at the end of the year, we'll, we'll bill the housing commission.
Okay. Okay.
And we'll know that, we'll, we'll bill them for the premiums that we paid for this year.
Okay. Okay. Now, the, the last one. We've got refunds and rebates. And we don't have anything there, but we had 4,914.
So it's any liability insurance dividends, medical insurance overpayments, tracing, excuse me, training, housing cancellation, and sales tax refunds. I can't guarantee revenue, so I don't, I don't project revenue or I can't.
So again, we do an amendment?
These are revenue funds coming in.
These are revenue funds, so they're less important. It's, the budget amendments become more important for spending that we didn't plan to spend.
No, I understand that, but that's what, that's what goes in, excuse me, that's what goes in for the housing commission. We don't know that figure, so we have an amendment for that figure? Okay. Let's make sure I'm understanding. So, but we don't have a figure for this one, so we don't have an amendment? Okay.
We will probably have an amendment. I'm just saying I don't know what it is at this time, so I can't project it to put it in the budget.
Because it's revenue?
It, it depends on dividends from liability insurance. There's, there's, there's no way to predict what we might receive.
Nope, don't... Okay, then you say, then I've got myself a note here where it says, "The loan proceeds," proceeds. That's 7,000.
Loan proceeds?
Yeah, the very last. And I, I know.
It's a different category, Marie.
It is a different category, I understand that, but it's colored in that same. So that's a revenue. That's a revenue of 7,000 for us.
That's from cemetery.
That's cemetery. You're looking a lineup.
It's not labeled for some reason.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, so there's no...
Yes, thank you.
And then that's 669.
The note says cemetery funds.
Yeah, it's just missing the name.
Oh, it's missing cemetery?
Yes.
For seven, okay, gotcha. So that's a revenue also. Okay.
Thank you for finding that.
That's... That's appreciated. I think for me... Page two, public safety, page 20. Okay, nope, thank you.
You're welcome.
Could I ask a question before you move on?
Go ahead, that's...
So, and I'm sorry if you mention this, but the Metro Act revenue, is that zero, but it looks like...
Now, where is that?
Where's that?
It's on page one, and it is 567.000.
567. Oh, the Metro Act, yes.
So that's something I think the treasurer and I need to clear out, because the local community stabilization act funds that we received and the Metro Act funds we receive, I, I have a feeling are getting all combined into one.
When he's doing his general ledger.
And then we need to have the accountant fix that when he comes and separate those out.
Okay. But you would expect there would be some revenue there?
Yeah, yes. It's just getting lumped together with the local community stabilization act funds.
What's the Metro Act?
It's, again, money we receive, I think, based on...
Telecommunication.
Telecommunications, I think you're correct.
And they call it Metro?
It stands for something. We looked it up when we were talking about it, but I don't remember what it was.
No?
Okay, telecommunications. That's... Huh. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Jennifer, did I see your hand?
No, I think you answered it.
Okay. I think the question you asked was, will we receive marijuana funding this year from the state? And yes, it's, if your license is in play before the end of September, I believe of the previous year, you do receive part of the funding collected by the state. In past years, it's been about $52,000 per license.
Because I know this will be our first year in '24.
Correct.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Just make sure everybody understands, this ad valorem, that's real property? Is that what that's? I just want to make sure everybody knew. We use that term all the time, and most people don't know what that means.
Where are you?
On page three.
Page three. It's the first note under 402.
The first two pages.
Okay. Yeah. Because sometimes when people see that, they don't know what that means.
And what does it mean exactly? It's your property, it's your house. Real property, real property.
Go ahead, I see.
Why not?
I see you.
Yeah, I'm sitting here because I'm remembering as I'm looking through this, because I looked at this quite a while ago. There aren't any figures at all for any of these notes to budget departments, 00, page three.
What do you mean?
These are the notes to what we just went over.
Yes, I know. And so you apply your 402 to your 402 here.
Yes.
Gotcha. Nope.
Okay, moving on to the township board, which is department 101.
Yeah, that's...
What page are you on?
It is page five. I think I should have brought my ruler with me. The first item that you have under township board is the salaries increasing 3%. That amount per trustee for four trustees is $5,781 per trustee, for a total of 23,124.
Can you say that one more time, Karen? Sorry.
$5,781 per trustee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The staff salaries, 704, that you see right under that is actually where we pay our committee member payments for attending meetings out of.
Okay, so these are committees.
Yes, yes, committee member payment.
I wondered what it said salary.
I know, it's confusing.
Can we change that to committee?
Um, I'll see if, I'll see if Jennifer and I can have our accountant change that.
Because that is very confusing.
It is confusing, I agree.
Well, it states in our notes that it's for committees.
I know that, but it's kind of nice.
I think if Adam can change it, we can. It's an easy change.
If it's something.
Um, the other item that I would point out is 706.000. It's called ordinance enforcement. That has always been in there, it's never been used, and I don't know why it appears there. So my apologies, but it generates when I generate the budget report.
Well, doesn't that include the revenue that Kevin does? No?
No. Cat's in Kevin's depart, the ordinance enforcement department.
Oh, okay. So can we eliminate that?
These are expenditures, not, yep. So we'll try to, we'll try to get rid of that one.
Okay.
Benefits is for general taxes, payroll taxes that get taken out for the trustees. And that, as you see, is, I've got it, $6,000. This year, we're at about $3,900 at this time of the year. This is also right underneath there, benefits housing commission. This is where we expend. This is where I've estimated the amount of the expenditure. That is where we would apply a budget amendment as to the expenditure. The revenues would be... A budget amendment would be made under revenues for that.
Must have heard that wrong.
I see a question.
I think I heard something wrong. That's all. When you, when you divided this 23,000 by four, I came up with 5,781.
That's what I said.
That's what I, that's what I said. I think I misheard.
Yep. We're both on the same page there. The next item, 801.000, contractual and professional services, is budgeted at $20,000. That is for the attendance of legal counsel at our board meetings.
Now, how, how does that break down at this point? So the, because this is a requested budget, but the other is a recommended budget, so we're requesting 20,000. What have we spent to date? Do we know?
Well, '23, we've only spent 1,700.
1,700, $1,735 to date.
Okay, 1,735.
Yep.
It's on that same line, right?
Nope, I wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Insurance and bonds, 802.000. That includes the township's liability insurance, workers' comp, five, fire and accident, as well as a 15% increase, because I don't have rates yet from the providers for 2024.
But like an actual decrease?
Kind of looks that way.
Oh, that's only through 831, though.
Well...
Right, but that's only going to grow bigger in the next four months.
So what happens is, is that our insurance policies are billed for, let's say, '23 and '24. The accountants will adjust the amount that needs to carry forward to 2024, so that lessens that amount.
Thank you.
Yep, and end of the year adjustments.
Okay. So we have no telephone for, do we cost for telephone?
Nope, not for trustees. No, we do not. There is mileage reimbursement, $100 per trustee. At this time, not often, it's, it's, it's not utilized frequently.
Except that we're already $20.91 over.
That's actually, that's a credit.
Oh, you're going to give that a credit when it's red?
So I think, I think something was probably miss-billed there, and the accountant made an adjustment.
So we don't know what we've spent at this point? Or we've spent nothing?
Or we've spent, we've spent nothing.
Okay, so it should be a zero. Got it. Okay. Is that the same with the community promotion? That there was a misstep there by the accountant?
Let me look, just one second. So there was avoided invoice and mileage. That's why you're seeing the credit there. Community promotion, give me one second.
So credit means it's over?
It's like a negative expense.
Yes, I know. Well, usually it does, but she said that was a credit.
No, that's what a credit is, right? If you think about like old math, it's like a negative plus a negative is a positive. At least that's how I process this in my own brain.
No, anytime I see it in parentheses and it's red, that's a negative. So that's, I don't do the, is that right or wrong?
It, it's a credit, so it is, it's positive.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those may have something to do with all the unclaimed items Adam and I have been correcting.
That is...
Okay.
Could be true.
From 2008 forward.
The one in community promotion, the 320 that you're seeing, The one in community promotion, the 320 that you're seeing, was for a music license that the township does not use and I refuse to pay. So that's been credited back. I think what happened is possibly we generated a check and I didn't agree to that, so it was voided.
Under the community promotion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that's music?
It was a music license, they're referred to as ASCAP. If you play music during public events, they like you to have the license and we don't generally do that.
Well, then who, who doesn't know that? In other words, you got a check, so who doesn't realize that that's?
It could be that the invoice was put in, but then I refused to approve the invoice, so then it was credited back.
No, that's what I mean, somebody had to submit an invoice. So somebody thinks different than what we do with the township, or you wouldn't have gotten an invoice.
So they like to bill everybody. They're one of those organizations that will bill every organization, any municipality in the state, and most people just pay them?
Okay.
But I said no.
Okay.
Don't need it, don't want it.
Then they should be notified, then.
They have been notified, that's why there's a credit there.
Multiple times.
Multiple times.
Heard that before.
Over multiple years.
So, okay, now we're on the rentals.
Okay, rentals there is for the cell tower payments that we make per a court order.
So we have October, November, December, we have three months. Okay, that's $750, right?
That is correct, it's $720 per month.
Oh, 720, I'm paying more. Okay. So we have three months left, so that's $2,100.
Four months left.
You've got four, this was as of August.
Oh, we haven't paid for.
Yeah, it's as of the end of August.
Okay, plus 720. Okay, so that's 2,800, 2,800, 800, oh, $2,880. Add it to your 5,000, I just wanted to make sure. Got it, so it's four months. Times 720, the Costco, okay. Yeah, because that's quite a chunk. Okay.
I think the MyDeal used to be paid for out of the police department, but really the entire township utilizes it, so that one's been moved as well.
Oh, which one's being moved?
MyDeal.
State purchasing.
It's a state purchasing program.
Is there a way for BSNA to, do we have that?
BSNA is under, it's under.
Yep, there it is, four town, okay, got it.
It's, it's under the computer services, BSNA is.
No, what I was, no, what I was saying for, if you're 714, which is way back up, it's listing four trustees, FITW, whatever that is, CITW.
Those are your state and federal taxes.
Okay, that's, I assume that's what that was. Medicare, Social Security, John Hancock Life. Okay, so when we come down to dues and membership.
Which is actually on page six.
For 757, it would be correct. So then it's listed out as to what they are, but what you're looking at is new is?
Probably that whole last line right there, MyDeal, Sam's Club, Costco memberships, and Amazon.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And then education and training is, is education and training for the four trustees. It also, 2024 will be an election year, so there may be increased costs there.
For training? Oh, because the new one's coming in?
New, whatever.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
So that's $1,000 per assuming?
Correct.
Okay. The ASSU and me thing. Okay. I mean, that's quite a chunk of change for the board, but it did go down, at least we haven't paid. By the time that's done, you're going to have an increase, not a decrease. What did you decrease for your requested budget for the Township Board?
Let me go back.
Let me, let me just, that's just me double checking here. Six, that's up, that's up, that's up, that's up, they're all up, and yet.
So you're looking at the 2023 activity, I think?
Right, I am, at 249,000.
So we're not done with the budget year yet?
No, I understand that, but the requested budget is 240.
That's that insurance issue I asked about, Marie.
That that's a decrease?
That they're going to, not a decrease, they're going to journal entry into the right fiscal year a portion of that. So by the end of the year, that 249 will come down.
Because we're billed, insurance is billed for 23 and 24, they'll take the 24 cost out of there and carry it forward to 2024.
So actually, they ought to be more than 240.
That will reduce, that will reduce that.
Oh, it'll reduce the 240?
It'll reduce, yes, the insurance lines and the dues and memberships decrease significantly because they carry them into the proper budget year.
Okay. Okay, so I can put decrease.
Such as our Michigan Townships Association dues, they're billed from July to June.
July, yeah.
So the June, the January to June portion will be carried forward into 2024.
Well, as it should be, but that's an interesting, okay.
It gets pretty big for a little bit and then it gets adjusted.
Yeah, that's what I'm, so there isn't any way to okay a budget when we really don't know the numbers? I mean, we're okaying a budget, but there's a lot we don't know.
There's, yes, there's the adjustments by our accountants, correct.
Now, this ought to be really interesting. Page seven, correct?
Yep.
Okay. That's hysterical.
What's hysterical?
This whole number thing, this is a 3% increase, is that what that's supposed to be?
That's correct.
Okay, what if they don't want it?
That's, I still need a budget for it.
Yeah, right. And the benefits, what is?
The benefits is the payroll taxes, we were talking about state and federal withholding. There's also the, I believe, the payment to John Hancock, is that correct?
That makes sense.
Yep.
That's outrageous, by the way.
What's outrageous?
John Hancock.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's outrageous. Okay.
The next item is office supplies, which I have listed as $100.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Operating supplies listed at 250.
Now, what's operating supplies?
If you required a, I can't even think what they're called right now, a plug-in strip for your office, that could be under office supplies, or operating supplies, excuse me. Office supplies obviously are expendable, their pencils, their pens, their ink for a printer could be there, a power strip could be there, things that you don't, you'll use up, let me put it that way.
Don't use up.
Yes, usually.
Yeah, because I was going to say, and I don't have any of those, and that's why you've got 000, which makes sense, other than the dues and membership, which, that of course is paid other than for the town, for Michigan Township Association for doing their video and et cetera. That's, that should be listed, shouldn't it? Because you pay that, or is that put simply cells?
Dues and memberships? You're asking me what again, I'm sorry?
Yeah, no, what I'm asking is, the only thing that, that I can see that I've ever used for this, because this is something I don't do, is your membership, dues and membership, and you've got 00, and yet you've got 250 for the budget for 24.
So if you were to not return in the election, and the new supervisor wished to become a member of the Supervisors Association, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so it'd be after the election. They could certainly become a member of the Supervisors Association or whatever organization they would wish to.
Oh, okay, so what it says here for your dues and membership is additions to what you already have.
So you're automatically, so you're automatically a member through the Michigan Townships Association, so this would be any other municipal.
Okay, so that falls under something else, it doesn't, sorry, it doesn't fall under the supervisors.
No, it falls under the Township Board.
Township Board.
Yep.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, dues and membership Township Board, okay, got it. And that's the same with your education and training?
Correct.
Even, well, even though the Township Board figures four, not seven, because the clerk and the treasurer are in different.
Those reside, those reside, yep, in different, in your department's budgets, excuse me.
I know these are questions, because I had this last year, too, it was like a really odd kind of thing that you're figuring. So we don't figure salaries with the Township Board?
That's just the trustees.
We figure, right, but we will figure education and training, correct? Is that?
No, you have 600 here for your education and training.
Yeah, but that's for the new budget, not for 23.
Well, 23, you have 600.
You have 00.
You haven't used any, but you have 600 budgeted.
Activity for this, and that's what I guess I'm trying to figure out, so if you don't use it, what happens to it?
It returns to the general fund, fund balance.
Gotcha.
Or decreases the deficit that we would already be, because what you've proposed is that.
I hope so.
What'd you say?
I think she's talking about.
867?
Yeah, the current year.
Return to general fund.
Well, that's true this year, too, though, right?
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay, capital outlay. So education and training, you've put in 1,000, so all of that that you have, this $25,935 for the most part, goes back into the general fund?
No, your salaries out of that.
I get that.
So it was only like?
Couple thousand.
Five thousand.
Yeah, it's right here, this $1 amount goes, okay, no?
The benefits, too.
Yeah.
No, you're, yeah, the benefit stays. Like I say, that John Hancock, that's amazing, but.
2,300.
Okay, no.
2,400.
Yep. Ooh, you're good, that's why I have a calculator. The mind is a calculator, that's a good man. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to the Superintendent's Department, the first line salary is my salary per my contract. Staff salaries are for the deputy superintendent and the front office assistant.
Now, who would that be, with your front office assistant?
Samantha Evans.
Okay, for Sam, okay, got it.
And then there is also time factored in to overtime pay because Samantha helps assist with the elections and next year is a major election year. So there's overtime built in there for Samantha as well for elections.
And that would be under?
Staff salaries.
Okay, that's, because that's pretty high.
You're looking at benefits for the three of us, again, because we don't know what the rates will be, there is a 15% across the board increase in benefits for those of us that have health insurance benefits. I should know that number better in October.
Oh, so that'll change?
Correct.
There, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I was told to expect double-digit increases, but it could be 10 or 15, so I used 15 at this time.
Okay.
Office supplies, operating supplies, hiring expenses. So if our, let's just say our planner were to leave and I had to advertise to fill that position, those expenses would come out of this line item.
Well, this line item, all right, for 23 then, because we're adding a minimum of three new positions, so how does that fit in?
So usually we, we advertise with the Michigan Township Association, thank you, I had a little stutter there in my brain, as well as.
Not at your age, my age you're supposed to do that, people say. Okay.
And we try to use other familiar job classifieds such as Indeed online, so.
So that number, that 200 number should increase?
It will increase, yes, it will.
Okay, okay.
It's for all hiring expenses except for police and fire.
Okay. Except PD, got it.
Yep, telephone, and those are listed below, Marie, for you.
No, I know.
Telephone is for the monthly payments of two cell phones and equipment replacement.
Okay. Mileage reimbursement.
So per my contract, I receive $200 a month for the use of my vehicle, and so there will need to be a budget amendment this year, and I am planning for it in next year's budget as well.
With that kind of salary, should there be a mileage reimbursement? Does that mean for your private car, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that doesn't include oil changes and that kind of thing, just the mileage?
Just the use of my car.
Ooh.
It's a stipend, it's not a mileage reimbursement.
Mm-mm, it's a stipend.
Okay, can we call it a stipend? Instead of mileage reimbursement?
Well, the fact is, is that the other two members of my department can get mileage reimbursement, so theirs is in there as well.
Okay.
I could put it in the notes as a stipend plus additional for the other two people in the department.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay.
Karen, wasn't this one of the areas that the, the woman who did an assessment of our systems pointed out that this should be taxable?
Bethany Vrabel.
So should that move to benefits, then, since mileage reimbursement?
It's paid through the benefits, through payroll, so it is taxed and it is handled appropriately, but it's still listed separately. I can move it to there, to benefits if that would be more helpful or understandable.
I mean, it's technically a benefit in your contract, I don't feel super strongly about it, but those items are all tax-related, the mileage reimbursement isn't taxed.
I can make that change.
I mean, it doesn't make a huge difference, but it is a little bit clearer.
Okay, there's no miscellaneous.
Dues and memberships, this includes memberships to the International Association of Municipal And then education and training is for anything not covered by the Michigan Townships Association for the three of us.
So it's the same increase kind of thing that, even though we still have four months, is that what we're figuring? Four months left on the activity for 23?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Karen, is it okay if I do this?
Yes.
Okay, you're at education and training?
I just indicated that that is for anything not covered by the Michigan Townships Association for the three of us in our department.
So Samantha's included in your department?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
So if there were any HR trainings she would like to take or that would be covered under that area.
That would be interesting. Okay.
All right, moving on to the assessors department. This includes a 3% increase in addition to a longevity increase, our assessor's been with us since 2001, and includes hours of overtime for field work.
Karen?
Mm-hmm.
Can you explain the longevity? What's the step structure for that? 2001 feels like a weird year when we're looking at 24.
So the steps according to, I use the same ones used in the police contract, 10 years or over is 1.015%. If you've been here over 20 years, it's 1.025%.
So each year, you get that?
It's just a total of 2.04% for this position, plus the 3%.
Say that one more time to me.
2.04.
Right.
Plus the 3% increase, the COLA increase.
So she actually gets a 5% increase?
So it's a 5.04% increase.
Per year, per year.
But every year?
Well, it'll go up.
We started, when, when we approved the position next door, this board indicated they wanted to apply longevity increases to whoever they applied to, so that's applying this here to the assessor.
I'm sorry, I, I just don't, I've never had a longevity, so I don't understand how it works. So you're saying that after 20 years, that sort of factor is applied every single year to their pay?
Correct.
Oh, wow, okay.
That's not the same as the cost of living.
3% is the cost of living increase that I've.
That's what you're using, okay, you're using COLA.
I used 3%.
As a 3%?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, I guess I didn't, I didn't realize that. Okay, so COLA is the 3%.
Yes.
Hmm, we used to get that in the legislature and they gave that one up. That was, okay, what's the?
So temporary salaries, we'll need to change that to salaries, that will be the position that this board has approved for the department. It assumes that the person will be in a Michigan Advanced Assessing Officer, so a level three. It is very possible that we will receive a level one or a level two person that we hire, so I budget it high and I, because I don't know what we're going to get when we hire.
So it could go lower?
It could go lower, you're correct.
So how will we know that?
Once we hire the person and have them on board, it could be adjusted.
So we'll know then, because you'll say, you'll tell us at that point?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's.
And will you, will you hire before the fiscal year or will you wait until?
We will try to hire before the fiscal year.
Okay.
Well, we already figured 26,000 or something that everybody supposedly agreed to.
Yep, you're correct.
And the benefits are including?
So the benefits includes the assessor's benefits package. So the benefits includes the assessor's benefits package and a full benefits package, it assumes a family benefits package for the person that hasn't yet been hired.
And a new person?
Yes.
Okay. So regardless of her stash, or status or classification, one, two, or three, this is the dollar amount for her benefits?
Correct. So she could come in and only need single benefits or an employee plus child, or an employee plus spouse, but it assumes a family benefits package at this time.
Now, if that doesn't come to fruition, in other words, if she's a single female who comes in and you can decrease this?
Yes.
And that goes back into the general fund?
Correct.
Okay, instead of your amendments that we allegedly to agree to? Because we'll know by that time, won't we, or not? Is she gonna be hired in 23 or in 24?
It's unknown at this time, we will try to hire in 23, but it's very possible we won't know until 24.
Okay, so we'll say, for the sake of argument, that she comes in in 23?
Mm-hmm.
And she has a less requirement for that? That then goes back into the general fund?
Could be, yes, it could be reduced and returned to the general fund fund balance.
When you, when you then decide that we are supposed to pay X amount of dollars, we still pay that even though it decreases, no?
No.
Okay.
No.
I mean, I think about it a little different, if it's helpful, it, there's, it's like money not expended, so it's not like something's actually returning to the general fund, you just never spend it.
Oh, I get that, it's like my home.
Yeah, yeah, it is more like a home.
Exactly, so it's your home budget, I understand, but that's what I guess I'm questioning, because if you have $100, okay, and our amendments are $100. We're saying, if I'm understanding, you don't give that $100 to your amendments?
It?
Even though it's there?
It would, it would decrease the overall net of revenues and expenditures?
Correct.
But, but trustee Funes Bliss is correct, it's, it's numbers on a piece of paper, and if you don't expend it, it, it doesn't get expended.
It's just there, as a placeholder.
It's just there, correct.
So we still have it, but it's a placeholder.
I think about it as permission, right, we vote to approve the budget, it gives Karen permission to use that.
I get that, that's what I'm questioning. Okay. So your office supplies?
Office supplies, operating supplies, um, contractual and professional services is for legal counsel's time, for tax tribunals.
I'm sorry, is that operating supplies?
Mm-hmm. So she didn't propose any for this year, um, last year she purchased a new scanner from that line, but she, she doesn't have anything that she requested this year. For operating.
An election year where she'll be going, more property is being purchased? Okay, gotcha. Okay. All right, all right, guys, you wanna quit at this point? Yeah.
Yep.
That's what I kind of figured. All right, so we'll mark it at the next one, which means contractual and professional. Okay, got it. Now, the next time being?
Two weeks. Two weeks.
Is that what you want it, okay? And this has to be done by December 13th?
You have to hold a public hearing by December 15th and have the budget adopted by the end of the calendar year.
And the next year you'll have to do it much earlier, because of the new group coming in, but this year we're looking at December. Okay.
I don't think that changes next year, Marie.
No, it doesn't change with the new.
It will change. That, yeah, it does, well, it means, the only reason I think of it as changing is because if the new board comes in, they can't adopt a budget that they know nothing about. So our budget in 20, no, I didn't.
In 2020.
Marie, you know you did. My word, you better read your notes. Okay, all right, so we're gonna stop at this point, so those who are here know. 6 o'clock, so you got four minutes.
Did we need to do a public statement too, Marie?
We should. Good move.
Public statement and board comments.
Yep. Number seven, public statements, there's a whole crew here having to deal with a budget.
Jeremy Tolliver, Clinton Street. Um, first one's kind of a joke. Unless you decide to candor all of these, you're gonna have over $250 just in eight minutes, so that was a joke.
There you go.
Um, it's always helpful when you have to tell people that.
I know, because, I mean, even in my company, I mean, it's way more than that. The other one was the marijuana piece, okay, the licensing piece. Are we, are you aware that that depends on the size of the facility?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so like, take the one over here, for example, they didn't get done on time. So they have a set date when they have to be done on time, and then they have to reapply and pay the same fee again. So.
A set figure in this budget?
What I'm trying to say is, um, I, I've done several large, large facilities, and they're a lot more than $56,000. They're more like $120,000, and if they don't get full occupancy by set date, they have to repay, they have to repay that in full. So does the township get to redo that, or is that just all federal?
So it's, it, the, the money that was mentioned here earlier is the money that we receive from the state for having a facility. Um, I don't, I don't know if it has anything to do with the size or when they were done or what they, what they paid to the state, but it is, part of the revenues are distributed among those municipalities that have the facilities. Um, last year, the basic price was, if you had a facility in your township, you received $52,000 if it was in place by September, the end of September, I think it was.
So when they do go over and have to resubmit and pay that additional fee, we get nothing?
So they come here to secure their licensing with us through the township, it's $15,000, because they are a grow, processing, and a retail facility. And it's $5,000 for each of those.
I guess I was just concerned, because I, I know the bigger the facility, the bigger the fee, and when they go over, and most of them do, because they don't hit their deadlines, it's another $119,000, so I didn't know if anything came back to the township.
I, it's my understanding that we just get, yeah.
Seems like it would in the second part as well.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm unsure of that, um, I'm just familiar with the fee structure that I've seen townships and cities receive because they have a facility.
Okay.
It's the pooled money at the state level?
Yes.
Okay. That's helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Anybody else has to do with the budget?
Good evening, my name is Judy Gardi. Life is precious. Joe was precious. He'd sit up there, be it on the Planning Commission or the Park Lake Advisory Board or the Rec Committee or the Township Board. He'd listen carefully to everything we had to talk about that evening or during the day, doesn't matter if it was the trail or the bow wash or the senior center. Joe would just sit up there and smile, listening, meaning carefully to all of us. When we'd come up here and talk about the senior center, he'd get a twinkle in his eye, he'd nod his head. He knew how precious the senior center is and was to him. He'd been there often, enjoying the family-like environment. I sure appreciated Joe's service to our community and his support for the senior center, thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Board member comments, or, first of all, let me ask, anybody else have to do with the budget? Okay. Now we can do board comments. Oh, we'll start with you, Sherri, go right ahead.
I'm just listening, thank you.
Thank you.
Learning.
Nothing tonight.
I was gonna say, God, it wasn't me.
Sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. My only comments was, Judy, that was a, that was a good point, it was a good point, and appreciate it, so thank you. It's nice that that's filling up, I like that. All right, I'm finished.
Good start to the budget process.
All right. Now we can officially adjourn. All right, it's a couple minutes after six, I'll give you five minutes for the board to go and be here.
Do we need to take a roll call?
Well, I don't think, why do we need to?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, okay.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Bullock, challenge a yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're official.
Now we can make noise, yay!
Now you can, that's true, you get noise for five minutes.